The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the Chair. There is a three-minute time limitation for presentations to the commission. This evening's agenda items are: Agenda item number one: Roll call and disclosure of conflict of interest, ex parte communication, and site visit. Agenda item number two: Approval of minutes. Agenda item number three: Public hearing, zoning map amendment. Aisling, will you go ahead and call the roll and ask each member, as your name is read, to please state your full name, the area where you reside, and if you have any ex party communications or conflicts of interest?
Bill Hancock?
My name is Bill Hancock. I'm from the Fremont Heights area of the west bench, and I have nothing else to report.
Sean Hargraves?
My name is Sean Hargraves. I reside in the university neighborhood, and I have nothing else to report.
Ryan Loveland?
I'm Ryan Loveland. I am from the Alameda area. I have nothing else to report.
Jack Moore?
My name is Jack Moore, and I live in the Old Town Historic District. And I did do a site visit, and I had ex parte communication with the former owner of the land in question. And he stated that it would be a good idea to rezone because right now, the land is just pretty much weeds, and he has to keep an eye on it for 4th of July. He's trying to find a place for him and his mother to move. And that was about the gist of the conversation.
Have anything else to report, Mr. Moore?
No.
My name is Sarah O'Connor. I live in the college neighborhood, and I have nothing to disclose.
And Ryan Loveland, oh, sorry, that's it. Oh, we have Ryan Satterfield excused and Jack Brennan excused.
Thank you, Aisling. Agenda item number two: The commission may wish to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on May 24, 2017. Has the commission had an opportunity to review those minutes?
I would motion to that we approve the minutes from the May 24 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion from Ryan Loveland to approve the minutes from the May 24, 2017 meeting. That motion was seconded by Sarah O'Connor. I'll take a vote.
Loveland?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Hancock?
Yes.
Hargraves?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes. Now to agenda item number three, the public hearing for the zoning and map amendment. The public hearing is now open for the consideration of this item. The time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding requests by Cal Kunkel. I don't know if I'm pronouncing the last name correctly. I apologize if I say it wrong, but Kunkel, represented by Blake Jolly of Connect Engineering, for a zoning map amendment to rezone the property at 4,259 Hawthorne Road from residential medium density, single-family to residential commercial professional. We will now turn some time over to the applicant to present their request to the commission. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Blake Jolly at 1150 Holly Park Drive in Idaho Falls, 83401, representing Mr. Cal Kunkel. You did really well.
No, thank you.
Kunkel is how we pronounce his name. Yeah, we're here in front of the commission site asking to rezone this piece of property to an RCP zoning after talking with Matt Lewis and Terry inside the city's offices on what we're trying to accomplish with this property. And we feel like this would be a great fit with what we're trying to do with the property. And then also, it's a nice fit with what's surrounding the property. As you can see in some of the things that we submitted, there's currently some RCP zoning to the north and to the south of here. And then with some of the flexibility that we'd like to be able to utilize in that RCP zone, we feel like it would be an advantage and a benefit to the city to be able to rezone that property, to be able to see that piece of property developed and become something for the city themselves. So I'm going to be really brief in my comments at first, and then if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to continue and answer any of those questions that I can.
Do we take questions now, or do we wait till after the presentation for questions?
Wait till after.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Blake. We'll now turn the time over to staff for their presentation, and staff will be represented by Terry New.
Actually, I guess I should have asked for clarifications. Questions from you all to the applicant? No, I'm sorry. You do that first.
Okay.
We had questions.
Could we go ahead and ask those then? If you'll please come back up, Blake. I just want to ask if there's any clarification for the commission on what you intend to do. I know that on the application, you originally asked for a different zoning than what you were proceeding with, but for purposes and the communication with the staff, it made sense to go for it with this zoning. But would you please discuss for the commission what the plans are at this point for that property?
So at this point, what we're looking at doing is doing a multifamily residential development. It's going to be townhome style, so that each one of those will be in visiting with staff. We need to put each door, if you want to say it that way, each door will be on its own lot. The streets inside there will be public. The utilities will be city hotel, sewer, and water that runs through the public streets will create an access. We'll tie into Ward Park on southwest side, if I remember, that Sunset Drive. We'll connect there and then make a connection out to Hawthorne. But basically, that's the intent of what we're looking at doing in visiting with staff. And Terry, specific, it was an RH. An RCP didn't really affect us that much, but what it'd do, it'd be more consistent with the surrounding zone, so it made more sense to go RCP.
Okay, and I recognize that that's not what's before us, but I'm sure for purposes of the public, that usually people want to know what's happening, what the landowners intend is for developing the properties. Any other questions from staff before we go, or commission before we turn time over to staff?
How many townhomes do you anticipate building there?
We don't know for sure right now. We're just in the beginning phases of that. We know that it'll work with our performant on how to do that, but we're currently working through those scenarios with staff on how to do that. And I'm trying to remember what our last count was. If I remember, RCP allows up to, I can't remember how many units per acre that is. How many? 30 units per acre, and we're going to be below that by quite a bit, but I can't remember off the top of my head the exact number. Sorry.
And so just for the purposes of those who may not have heard from the public, Sarah had asked how many units were planned to be built at this point. We'll have to speak up because some in the audience here tonight are having difficulty hearing without microphones. Is any other questions from the commission members?
Do you have a rough estimate of how many units?
I'm trying to think. I think there's going to be, because we're at, there's roughly 10 acres there, I'm sorry, that'd be 300 units. We're not even going to come close to that. We're going to be somewhere around 80-ish to 100 units, maybe, you know, a third of what's allowed in that zone. Somewhere around there. I should say, don't quote me exact. I didn't count them before we came.
Yes, and we understand that that's for a different meeting. This is just the rezoning tonight, so. If there's no other comments, thank you so much, Mr. Jolly. We'll go ahead and turn time over to Terry from the staff report.
Good evening. My name is Terry New. I'm Assistant Planner for the city. This rezon application has been initiated by Cal Kunkel, represented by Blake Jolly of Connect Engineering pursuant to Municipal Code Section 17.02.180B1. The rezoning request encompasses approximately 9.889 acres and is located at 4259 Hawthorne Road. There is a single-family home on the subject lot with some outbuildings. The surrounding uses are a mix of single-family residences, multifamily residences, OK Ward Park, and some commercial. The applicant originally requested the property to be rezoned residential high-density or RH, but staff notified the engineer that the comprehensive plan land use map designation is commercial, and they would have to go through a map amendment in addition to the rezon. And changing the rezon from RH to RCP, residential commercial professional, the applicant can still have the high-density residential, but because of the commercial component of that RCP designation, that a comprehensive plan land use map change would not be necessary. Notice of this application was published in the Idaho State Journal, sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject site, and a sign posted on the property giving notice of the hearing. A few telephone calls have been received, but no public comments either in support of or in opposition to have been received. Based on the findings outlined in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the rezoning of the property from residential medium-density, single-family to residential commercial professional. And this concludes my presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to entertain some, any questions from the commission, what they have for Ms. New. Ms. New, and really, as you had indicated, the whole purpose behind, I guess, the designation is simply to take out an additional staff. It wasn't to change the ultimate goal of the landowner.
Right.
Is there any other questions from the commission? Thank you, Ms. New. We'll now take comments from those in attendance who would like to speak to the commission. We'd like to remind you again that you need to be recognized by the Chair to speak. When you come up, to please give your name and address for purposes of the record, and that your comments need to be limited to three minutes. So if you could please do that to allow as many people the opportunity to speak as possible. Now, a record is being kept of this meeting this evening, and so we have to proceed in an orderly manner. So we first would like to take any comments from any member of the public who's here who would like to speak in support of the rezoning application that's been submitted. Seeing none, we'd also like to take time now for anyone who's neutral, they're not necessarily for, not necessarily strongly against, but they would like to make a comment to the commission, discuss their thoughts or feelings about the application. Would anyone like to come forward and speak now? Please. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Amber Call at 4213 Sunnybrook. I guess I'm pretty neutral. My biggest, obviously, this property belongs to Mr. Kunkel, and, you know, I'd like to see him be able to develop it as he would like. I don't really want to infringe on his rights to do so, but living so close, I do have my own property to consider as well. And at the moment, I guess my biggest concern would be what's going to happen with Sunnybrook. Are they planning to take it through and have an entrance there with these townhomes? And how many townhomes, would there be access off of Hawthorne to these? How much traffic is going to be coming through that little, that one little street? Because right now, it's pretty residential. There's a lot of families with small children who live around there. And I know even at current traffic levels, there have been at least two near misses where children were nearly hit by vehicles in that neighborhood. And so that's my biggest concern, having my own children, that I don't want to see a huge influx in traffic. I understand whenever you buy a house near a vacant lot, there will probably be an influx of traffic as you go, that there will be more homes or townhomes or businesses built in that area. And so I just want to make sure that as the plan is being made, that that increase in traffic is certainly being taken into account to make sure that we're not endangering the public, or making it too difficult to get in and out of that area. As well as the park. The park there also already has a large amount of traffic, especially during baseball season and some of the other sports activities. Parking there is already very heavy around the park. And I guess that's just my biggest concern is there, is making sure we're keeping those concerns in mind as we go forward to developing that area. I'm excited to see it get developed and to meet new neighbors, but wanting to keep those concerns in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Appreciate you coming and speaking to the commission.
Again, I'm sorry, one more thing that's wanted to add. It's my children do go to the school there. There's a school that's kitty corner to the property. I don't know what that zoning that falls into, but there's a school there, and I know my children and other children do walk to that school through that area.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Call.
Can we have them sign the sign-in sheet?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, print their name and address. Thank you.
I forgot to do that. Thank you for the reminder. Thank you, Ms. Call. Is there anyone else who would identify themselves as neutral that would like to come and speak to the commission? Seeing none, oh, sorry. Thank you. If you'll again, please state your name and address and make sure you sign into the sign-in sheet.
I'm Pam Broberg. I live at 4096 Sunnybrook. In hearing about this development, I had a concern about the traffic on Heber and on Sunnybrook. Right there next to the pet lodge, there's a vacant lot right there. Could they make an entrance there to alleviate some of that traffic coming in and out of the subdivision? There's quite a lot of space there. Wondering if they could consider that, as that would be a way to alleviate that. Also, what will this do to our property values and to our taxes as this is developed?
Thank you so much. Was that Broberg or Groberg?
Broberg.
Broberg, okay. Thank you, Ms. Broberg. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who would identify themselves as neutral? Yes, sir.
I'm her husband, and as you can see, I'm having a little hard time as I'm getting older to get around. And we have to pick up our mail across the street, and then also, we have grandchildren that come in, and they love to go over to the Brooklyn Playground and play. And so there is a little busy when we do have grandchildren there, and also when I cross the street. Plus, many times, there has been traffic going down Sunnybrook, and I know they're going way past the speed limit. And sometimes I get concerned about walking across that street and getting whacked out by one of the cars that's going down the street. And so that's my big concern, is picking up the mail that we have to get, and of course, bills from the city. And I just assume not have to go over there and get bills from the city, but that's the way it is. And so that is my concern, as some of us older people that have a little bit harder time. We have another neighbor across the street that he is great, and there's a few older people along that road also, and so that's my concern.
Thank you so much, Mr. Broberg, for taking the time to come and speak to us tonight when it's difficult to get around. The commission would welcome anyone else who would like to speak who would identify themselves as neutral. Seeing none, we'll now entertain and like to listen to those who've come tonight to oppose this rezoning and who would like to speak to the commission and share their feelings. Thank you. If you'll please remember to sign in.
My name is Kay Meiser, and I live at 1268 Heber. And I'm here to oppose it. Number one, the gentleman didn't say, he said there was going to be 30 units, approximately. How high are these units going to be? Are they going to be just one-level units, like my townhouse that I live in? Are they going to be two-story units, three, what? It was mentioned there in the letter that my building there, that it would block some of the noise from the interstate. The noise from the interstate doesn't bother me at all, and I sit outside all the time. I don't understand why it has to be apartments or multi-resident buildings there. I don't understand why you would want commercial there when you've already rezoned Hawthorne, and there's places on Hawthorne that's already commercial and it's zoned that way. We have so many buildings in this town that are sitting empty that they could utilize instead of building more. This area is a very nice, quiet neighborhood for young families and especially the elderly because of the one-level townhomes which I live in. Across the street from Heber, there's assisted living development, and the gentleman there talked about, or maybe the lady, about making the entrance come off of Cammie onto Heber. That area with the assisted living there is constant traffic now. My question would be, why can't, if they're going to approve it, why can't the entrance be straight off of Hawthorne into the development? And then you're not bothering any of the other existing homes. Let's see if I got that. And I'd like to say, I just don't understand why it can't be single-level homes the way the area is now. If he's planning on building high-rise or what he's doing, it just does not make any sense to those of us that live there. As far as the area that has been rezoned along the interstate, I can understand that being commercial, because most people don't want to live right next to an interstate. But as far as this property that we're talking about tonight, to me, it just does not make sense.
Thank you so much, Ms. Meiser. Is there any other citizen who would like to be heard or to speak in opposition to the application before the commission? Yes?
My name is Lori Bigelow, and I live at 4218 Sunnybrook. I couldn't hear everything that was being said. So is there multiple families zoning around there already, you said? No. No, okay. There's, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Along Hawthorne Road is residential, commercial, professional, but then as you get back into the neighborhood, that's residential, medium-density, single-family. Single, yeah. So right now, we have, I don't know if you know the layout, but I live on Sunnybrook, which ends at that property. And I guess these guys live on Heber, which comes down the other side. And so it's in their backyard, and it's right down the street from me. But we don't want the extra traffic. We already have a lot of traffic from Elegant Living, which is the assisted living place. And my understanding is that they will eventually expand that up further, and the lots that are behind me that are empty, they've blocked that out. Our park, because of our park that we have right there, too, like she said, it's super, super busy, with not just our neighborhood and Northern Lights and the area south of there, but they come from all over because we have one of the best parks there. And I think adding in a multifamily thing is just going to create more problems. Plus, we're worried about the value of our homes. I think it would affect mine right off the bat. I know the people that live right at the end, they did not receive a notice. They lived, the first property that sits on the corner of Heber and Sunnybrook, they didn't even receive a notice, so they're not here. But I walked around and talked to everybody in our neighborhood that covered the area that she told me that was home, and every single person said that they would, sorry, I didn't know I could, that they would leave, they would move if they found out that multifamily stuff was going to be there. A lot of the people are planning on selling if that's the case, because they understood when they moved there that it was single-family, zoned for single-family, and so they were okay with that. And they think that'll bring their property value down, it'll bring crime, more crime into our area. That's how I feel. I'm totally against it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Bigelow. We'll allow Ms. Bigelow to sign the tenant sheet, and then we will certainly be willing to hear from anyone else who would like to comment in opposition to the application. Thank you again, Ms. Bigelow. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll invite the applicant to come forward through his representative, Mr. Blake Jolly, and have time to answer some of the questions that have been posed here from the public comment.
Do I have to state the name and address again?
No.
Okay. I appreciate the comments and the concerns that are made, because those are some of the things that we definitely want to take into consideration as we try to move forward on this project. We like to-
Mr. Jolly, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could you speak up? Because I know there's people behind you, and I have difficulty, and I'm sitting directly in front of you. So if you could speak up, it would also allow them to hear your responses to their comments.
Will do. I'm fighting a little bit of a cold, but I'll do my best here.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, I was just stating that I'm glad to hear some of these comments, because that's some of the things that we can take into consideration as we try to move forward, and how we lay the project out, and how we can best mitigate any of those concerns as we can in the process of working through this. I just wanted to try to answer a few of the questions that were brought up, even though this is a zoning hearing, and I try not to bring too much about the development, because that's a whole different process, but to ease some of the concerns, I'll try to answer some of those the best I can. There's been quite a few comments made about location of accesses. In working with the city on trying to see what we can do there, the city is requiring us to make that connection to Sunnybrook, which Sunnybrook was stubbed to the property in the north for that specific purpose for a city street to continue through. We are working with the city to try to mitigate another access to the north. We're trying to tell them that where that's basically freeway frontage for commercial, we're trying to say, we don't want the commercial access to go through any of the residential developments. So we're working through that issue right now. And I think we're on the same page that we can mitigate that. The city also had us put the access onto Hawthorne through that property, because that property currently has no access other direction. And so we wanted that access to mitigate as many people as we possibly can from coming through Ward Park- as many people as we possibly can from coming through Ward Park and over and weaving their way through, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And so that main access up a Hawthorne Road, I think if we, if a traffic study was completed, you noticed, would see that the numbers would reflect that. Most of the, those peak trips would come from Hawthorne, not through Ward Park. Let's see, just going down through my notes here real quick, sorry. I guess the, the question was brought up, if, would it be possible to be able to put the access instead of coming down through Sunnybrook, through the, to the, I think it's the pet or mean place, or veterinary clinic, or that's right there? The answer is, is most likely no. I don't think the city would allow us. That would put two access points too close together, for one. And then the other thing is, we don't have, we don't own the properties, and we don't have the ability to, to, to do that. The concern with, with Sunnybrook from Mr. Groberg concerning the, the speed limit, I would highly encourage them, for one, if there is an issue with speeding on that, to get with city officials and to post a complaint to them and, and see if we, if they could get some more police officers patrolling that area for a period of time to see if that would help mitigate some of that. That doesn't always fix the problem, but it can help potentially in that issue. I wish there was something we could do about that, but there really isn't. One of the other questions or comments that was brought up was concerning freeway frontage typically being commercial, which is, which is what you see in any of the cities in Idaho or any of the surrounding states. You see commercial along the frontage of interstates. Because that's the prime billboard, you could say. One of the other things that you see in most of those cities is you transition from commercial to single-family residential, as you typically see some type of higher-density residential in between to, to take that gradual step down to single-family. And so in our, in our mind, that kind of fits that, in that aspect, is we're kind of taking that step down through there. The other comment that was brought up was the heights of the units. The units that Mr. Kunkel builds are all single-story. None of them are two-story units. They also typically see, which I know when you, when you say multifamily, it kind of is, is a little bit different. But he's built multiple projects in Montana. We're building multiple projects in Idaho Falls right now. And the units that are completed, typically, we see an older generation move into those units, because they are, typical unit size is a, a one-bedroom, one-bath, or a two-bedroom, one-bath unit. So you're not encouraging, you know, a family with six kids or something like that, that are going to move in and, and create lots of, a lot of, a lot, a higher population density, that's going to be a lot more drivers and things like that. Most of the time, we typically see the older generation rent these units. Not to say that, you know, a single mom or a single dad or something like that rent these units. That does happen. But on average, we typically see the older generation rent these units. Another comment that was brought up was a little bit about the potential for a higher, higher issues with crime and different things like that. The way that Mr. Kunkel runs these projects is, he, he himself owns them. His first project, he built 15 years ago, and he still owns it. He's not in the market of trying to build a project and sell. His market is he wants to hang on to him and use him as a long-term investment for himself. And so he's got a, a big investment in making sure that the units stay up to code, and also the development looks nice. Otherwise, they won't, they won't rent. So he maintains a HOA that each tenant pays a fee to, to be able to keep the landscaping and all those things up to, up to, I want to use the word snuff, but he likes to make them look nice. Otherwise, he's not going to be able to keep, keep, keep them rented. The other thing that, that they have to do is they, each applicant has to pass a credit score. I can't remember what the credit score is, but I think they have to make a minimum of, I think it's $40,000 a year is the minimum that they can make to be able to live there. And then secondly, they also have to, the rental agency that he uses does a background check, a minor background check that's available to the public. So he, they look through the sex offender website, and they look through the other website to make sure that they have no felonies of any kind in that nature. So they do go through some pretty rigorous checking to try to get the best tenants, and also to make sure that, that they know that they're not going to have an issue that causes issues to the, to the surrounding properties, because that would obviously affect him as well. So if I missed any other comments, that some of them are over the same points, but I, hopefully that covered most of them, and maybe put some people to ease with a little bit more information. So...
Thank you so much, Mr. Jolly.
Have you done a traffic study?
We have not. The city didn't require us to do one. And obviously, it's not part of the rezone application to do a traffic study. So at this point, we have not completed one.
Is there any other questions from Mr. Jolly?
I just, I got a little confused when, when the statement, the current, it is currently all zoned RMS right now, right? There is not, the, the Hawthorne frontage is not a separate zoning that...
Correct. It's all RMS, yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Jolly. The public hearing is now closed. I'd like to take comments from the, the commission. Actually, before we do that, I'm wondering, Ms. Dew, if we could ask one question, just because it came up in Mr. Jolly's comments. And that's regarding this access between Hawthorne and Sunnybrook, where it was stubbed in already on Sunnybrook. Could you just speak briefly to that issue?
Yes, the, Sunnybrook was stubbed in, so that it would connect through. And then the, the question was, why, there's two vacant lots where Heber and Cammie intersect, and they're wanting to know why that can't be used as an access point instead of Sunnybrook. Mr. Kunkel does not own those two lots. Those are owned by the people that own the pet den. And I've actually spoken with that gentleman, and they're actually looking at doing a little dog park associated with their, their business. And so, but even if, even if they didn't, even if Mr. Kunkel was able to get those properties, an intersection coming, or the street coming in from Cammie is too close to Hawthorne Road. And I know traffic engineering doesn't like to have intersections that close together, just because cars have a tendency to back up. So, or not, not, not reverse, but like lines of traffic, as you can see at Hawthorne and Quinn intersection. And so that would be one reason why. And they also don't like offset intersections. And so chances are, if, if at all possible, that intersection would probably be directly in line with the driveway going into Home Depot. So if at all possible, that will be what, what, what I know that traffic engineer will try to, to configure with when it comes to the subdivision phase. So I don't know if that answered your question, but, so...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet.
Would they entertain now any comments from the staff or discussion, or not staff, but the commission members? I would just...
Mr. Hancock? Clarify something, will you?
The, the time's close for the public hearing, and so we don't, under our rules, we can't take comment. We can't clarify on it. I, I guess, I'm typically not the chair. I'm filling in tonight, because the chair is absent. But am I allowed to make comments as the chair, or do I sit quiet and only allow others to make comments?
No, you're not. You're going to make comments.
I'm just a Captain Lewis bossy.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I just want to, to say, one of the observations I, I've seen and taken from the hearing tonight is that I understand the concerns, because I live in a single-family residential, and I would be concerned if I see it being changed behind me. But I think with an understanding that what they intend to build is single-story, basically, I picture it like duplex-type units, with each having their own front door. And having lived in one of those in, in the past, and one that had a homeowner's association, I recognize that it didn't feel any different than when I've been in a single-family residential neighborhood. And it seems like it is a natural transition compared to what could otherwise go in there. And it's, it really is just a step down, as opposed to building large apartment complexes, like you see on the other side of Hawthorne, out by the mall, and those types of things. I, I certainly would understand a concern with those, but is there any other...
I do think that we need to always keep in mind, whenever we're doing rezones, that intent is, is worthless at this point.
Yeah.
Once you rezone, it's rezoned, and there's no promises of whatever will, will or will not go in there.
That's a fair statement.
If, if nothing happens 10 years down the road, someone wants to put in, put in large, you know, yeah, the big one, they can do it if it's rezone. So we can't, we're not making any promises about what goes through. Personally, though, I, I don't, apartments are kind of still, if I understand it, what's going right now. And people are building apartments. And I, I like to let people do with their land what they can do with their land. I understand everybody that comes through here says traffic is going to get worse, and it, it will. It's common. I guess I'm not trying to...
No, I understand.
I, I'm saying, yeah, if we rezone, and we open it up the door for whatever, but at the same time, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposing myself to, to whatever. I, I don't want to see nasty traffic, but I want to see things grow.
Ms. O'Connor, were you about to make a comment? And I, I turned, and I just wanted to make sure.
No, I wasn't.
Was there any other comment from the commission? I'd entertain a, a motion at this time.
A motion that we recommend approval of the rezon, and authorize the chair to find, sign the findings of fact. Did I miss anything on there?
There's no findings of fact on this one.
There always is on...
Oh, no, sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, just signed the facts.
So we recommend to council, were there any...
Have the chair sign the findings of fact?
Yes, I did say. Vice Chair.
Vice Chair.
Currently acting chair.
We have a motion for Mr. Loveland to approve the rezoning as pursuant to the application and for a findings of fact to be submitted, with the vice chair to sign those. Do we have anyone to second that motion?
I'll second it.
The motion has been seconded by Ms. O'Connor. So Aisling, will you present the, the motion for a vote?
Do you want me to reread it, or just call?
Maybe make sure we have it right.
Okay. The commission is recommending approval to city council for a zoning map amendment to rezon property of 4259 Hawthorne Road from residential median density, single family to residential, commercial, professional, per staff recommendation, and to authorize Vice Chair Hancock to sign the findings of fact. Loveland?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Hancock?
Yes.
Hargraves?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Does he have a second?
I say motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. With no other business, this meeting is closed. They sign one of the computer clock time.
7:14?
Thank you.